But, we're ready on one on the board. So it's all up, you know, up to all of us. Like I said, I think that may be a little like, depends on how much you guys want to do. And then that brings us to the sign. Again, it doesn't say we have to do it. But it does allow for it.
You got something on that, Reggie?
I did. I think, of course, I have people who had pushed me to ask several times, Howard, for a sign in front of the town hall. I brought it to the board several times. Appreciate you guys listening to it. I just think the $30,000 is, you know, outrageous price. And that's just my opinion on it. I think it's too much.
It was cheaper than I thought it was gonna be.
Really? Okay.
Why can't we build just a regular sign? Yes, I know we have to have somebody go out there and change it. But each week, make the changes to what meeting days are gonna be whenever, or whatever they want. Only thing I've ever heard is that they would like to know when the meetings are, and when the work sessions are.
Simple.
So why can't we go out at the beginning of January and put, alright, meeting, January, whatever? Work sessions, ding ding. And it's done. We don't have to spend $30,000, or whatever it's going to be for that digital sign, to put a regular... I mean, we could get someone to build a nice sign. Obviously, we don't need to go out there ourselves, or have Mike's guys or anybody else go out there and build the sign. But if we could get somebody to build a nice sign with an open... that opens the face. Make your changes on it each month, and move on.
You can do anything you want, as long as you put the money in the budget. And whether you spend it all, or you don't spend any of it, it's up to you. And there's a lot... I'll tell you, and I use it a lot, because we've experienced a lot. We had one of the ones that we bought from Lowe's over at the fire station. And they had the little plastic ones to insert. And we were constantly replacing them. We're constantly going out there and putting them in. What you're talking about, if you wanna build a cabinet, and have some kind of plexiglass in front of it to lock it down, hopefully. They wanna get somebody to build that, or an architect to figure that one out. I'm just going by what Reggie asked for.
Still gonna need electric to see it.
Huh?
Still gonna need electric to see it.
And you're still gonna be two-sided, too.
And so I need to change it once a month. And, well, more than once a month.
Twice a month, or three times a month.
Yeah, exactly. It would depend on your meetings, or what are you gonna put on it? No, it's not gonna be my job.
Well, you're not gonna be able to put everything on a digital one either, 'cause it can't rotate. Not in this town, can it? You can't have our meetings on it, and then flips over to baseball sign-ups, the...
Because, because it goes out, and then the next message comes up. And then it goes out, and then the next message comes up.
What you can't do is like when they had the planes and everything else, or something scrolling across.
Or like Marshall School. What they got going on, okay. If anybody's gonna complain about it.
The residents who requested this are now opposed to spending that much money. That's kind of, kind of a situation where... And I agree with them. I think 30,000 is outrageous. And that's the way I feel. That's... I'm just one person, that's all.
No, that's what I told you when we brought it up seventeen times. I said you're not gonna like the first tag.
And that was brought up to the residents, too, when they voiced in the meeting that you were talking...
Thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. But I really honestly thought it was gonna be more than thirty. I was so shocked when he said that board came in at what it did.
Yeah, but is that just the sign? You still gotta get electric there?
Oh, you gotta get it installed.
You gotta install, your 30,000 is now probably 45,000 for your 50.
You gotta tie it to a computer in here. 'Cause the computer controls the board.
Fortunately, that's all gone Wi-Fi instead of hardware now.
Yep, that's what he said. He goes, "You can get it, you know, still E-Pass, or you can go wireless." I think that... I know that he told me that wireless is the way to go. But you still need to password protect it, that way somebody can't put something bad up on the sign.
I don't think I could go 30,000 on this project. My opinion, just one person, that's all. Fine.
So, do we wanna reduce this down to some other amount? Again, Reggie, I want you to understand, just because the 30 is there, don't mean we have to spend it all, and it will roll automatically back into...
We gotta keep the clamps on who the spending, right?
You gotta keep the clamps on me?
Not you, personally, the board. I don't wanna throw 30 grand on that.
I never wanted to. I just put it out there because that's what you were asking for. And that's what they were asking for. So I did the homework and got it out here. So it could go away, because I've been hearing it for almost two years. Right?
Okay.
So, like I said, do you...
It's fine.
Do you wanna take this out, or reduce it?
I'm not up for spending 30,000.
So do you wanna reduce it to something that wouldn't be a digital sign, and look into something like that?
Yes, yes. Doesn't need to be digital, no. No, I agree with you on that. Basic sign.
And glad you're both agreeing with what I've been saying for the last friggin' two years. Alright, so anyways, what are you looking at? What do you wanna put in there? How much are you willing to put into a sign?
I think if you reduce that to 10,000...
That would be high.
I still think you're high. That would be a number to work with.
That depends on what you use for materials, and how far you gotta run that over and everything.
If you're gonna make it so it just don't look like a pole in the front lawn with something attached to it, you're gonna look at masonry of roughly six grand before you do anything. That's a pretty standard, you know, whether you use rocks, or decorative rocks, or you build it out of blocks. You could probably get it, probably not that much cheaper if we went with the, you know, not really the pavers, but you know, the different kinds of brick things that they have, or brick pavers they have. But I'm gonna say that you're still gonna spend about that much just before you even get to whatever the construction of the sign is. Unless you use them for a pole out there with a cabinet. If we're gonna do that, my suggestion would be to have some con... you know, somebody go to Wood, like Sean, or somebody, one of my friends that I know, and build a cabinet out, much like we have the, in the front, how you have those numbers and letters you can push into that that don't change a lot. And put another one up alongside, and they can come stop by and look at that thing anytime they want. But somebody's gonna have to change it. That's a imaginary buildings and grounds guy, let's forget him. But that you could probably do for a couple hundred bucks.
I think certainly 5,000 dollars at the very most.
Just take it out.
Thought? Do you agree?
Nicely taken out.
I mean, if the people now are complaining about the price, tell them that was our estimate, I guess, and I agree with my...
I think if we get a website going, most people, you can steer them towards a website.
Right.
And they'll get used to it, like every other thing that's going on in the world.
And I agree, because you're... This side street does not get the traffic that State Route 22B does. If you live on this side of the town, you're gonna go this way every day.
Put the tent in there and just leave it. If you don't use it, you don't use it.
And I hate to say, we have the same people for all our meetings. People know when the meetings are. I don't care if there's a sign out there, whether posted or not. If they're coming to the meetings, they're coming now.
It's probably the three that show up. 'Cause that's roughly what we get.
It's important.
The three.
We need to have the website function, so that's...
Yep, and that is...
That would be a plus.
So, do you wanna scratch the 30, or move it to five, or what do you wanna do?
Sure, sure. Deal, Reggie, huh?
You're the one that's talking to people.
I think five is plenty. Maybe we could contact BOCs here, I'm saying it again, but maybe they would help out in a simple sign. So, maybe if we could leave five on that?
We could leave it, like Kevin said. If you put five there, and you don't use it, it's still there. We could use it for something different later on.
But I don't think, if you're gonna put something up that's aesthetically nice in the front of this thing, because we do have a memorial out there for our veterans, I just am apprehensive about putting something in the lawn out there that just is not really complimenting to the building and the memorial. And that's why I say, I know this is a conservative figure.
I was just caught off base with 30,000. That's all. I didn't realize that.
I say, like Mike says...
It really shocked me, because I thought it was gonna be about six...
Time we get our internets, everything going on our computer systems, and not worry about a sign.
So you wanna take this one out for now, for this year? You can always look to see if we can get something on the side of the building for... That, I don't mind so much. You know what I'm saying? Because we do have signage out there already that we can do that one. I'm just apprehensive about putting something that's gonna look like you didn't spend a lot of money on. See, you know what I'm saying? In that area. That would be my home. So I take the 30 out for the sign. Everybody else is good with everything else? Let's gonna move that bottom total down 765 to 4, 540. Is everybody in concurrence with that? Overall, I just broken down 200,000 actually goes to the highway, so you're looking at 340. And 200 on the other pages. Take this one out. And we'll go to 340.
So it's gonna be 1.28 for a minute.
Oh, yes. Alright, is everybody good with that? No? Okay, Reggie's still applying, unless somebody else has something on...
Could we speak about ARPA? Right now?
ARPA? That's not in the budget or a budget issue, but what do you wanna talk about now?
A couple of things. On the River Street water situation with us running the water year-round, I wanna bring it up now. In fact, you have property where you're forced to run that water in the winter of time. And what I'm asking is that we could use ARPA funding to somehow take a look at that River Street situation, and maybe work with the Rural Water Association, and see if they could come up with a plan where we could get that situation where we wouldn't have to run water year-round. Where we wouldn't have to run chlorinated water into a wetland and into the Serenac River. For, what is it, three, four months of the year, maybe, that... Is that, you keep yours running about that?
Approximately.
Right. And you have three homes over there, right?
No, it just runs...
Just one that you need to run?
The end of the line, I only run one.
I see, okay.
And that's like, just enough that it's moving.
That adds up, for sure. And in addition to the line on River Street where the Town of Plasford comes up there, and what if they turn it on around maybe November, 10th, Kevin, or so? And it usually goes up until March, probably, March 15th, or whatever. And I think maybe ARPA funding would be something ideal to take a look at that project and see what that project would come in at.
So kick that right over into the rebuild of the water that we're doing anyway?
Well, it's certainly, the rebuild of the water is an idea. It's not anything that's being confirmed right now, as we all know. It's moving along. But this right here, here we're into another winter where we're actually wasting water again. And maybe, just maybe, you guys would consider using ARPA funding to at least take a look at that situation, see if we can do something with it. That's all. That's all I'm saying. Maybe look at it.
And I think at one time, you already did look at that. I think at one time, you already discussed that with Rural Water.
Right.
And if I remember right, you were supposed to have that guy contact me.
That guy is willing to get up here, once again, Kevin, and at no charge, because we joined it.
And that's what I said, if you could send him to me so that we could talk, because we can get his idea on whether or not what will work or what won't work. The one thing I don't wanna do is pay good money after bad.
Absolutely not. Neither do I.
You know, putting a pump in and recirculating it?
Right.
Is basically, way back, two years, three years ago, actually, when I talked, I tried to get Greg Tennant's, I shouldn't use the name, but the guy that was in charge of the fruit water.
Yes.
And that's what he had suggested, with some check valves in there.
Right.
And then recirculating the water, which may or may not work, depending on how big a line you got, and how much the costs are. But I guarantee you, if you dig that road up from the end of Mason Street all the way to the end, you're looking at tens of thousands of dollars to do it. And I'd much rather see the old 1950-something, I'd take out of that than just try to tap into a buck.
It's just an idea, and I think ARPA would be...
Lack of a better word, it sucks. You know what I mean? Until we get that locked down, it's whether or not we wanna spend money to try to fix it in the meantime. Or we... I will tell you this, if we don't move forward on the other project by this fall or early spring, you're not gonna have to worry about the other project.
I understand.
Because we'll have the funding for it.
Right. But maybe the guy from New York Rural Water would come to a work session, Kevin, and brief the board on what he knows about it. Would that be okay with the board to have him come? Let him present.
I think it would be worth it for us to meet with him.
Okay.
And then bring back what we thought were the good ideas to do that. That's why I asked.
Right. We're paying so much a year to write Mary for New York Rural Water. For each of our districts, we're paying... How much was that, Kevin?
About 800 and something bucks altogether, I think.
Is that total?
Yeah, it went by how many users.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Each one's separate.
It is, okay.
I think it was a little over a hundred dollars for a year, right around that mark. You don't have it right in front of me, it's not a hundred percent, but it was roughly somewhere around that.
And my final thing with ARPA is for... There's people in our town, like, we get back to the roads not being town roads. People like, for example, up there off Soper's, Woodland Hills Drive. We've got a group of, I believe there's like 12 homes in there. And it's continuing on. They're living there, they don't have a town road, they don't have any services, they don't have a stop sign there. But what I'm saying is, can we continue forever like this, at this pace? That we're putting people living there without services? And I mean, the same thing honestly applies to Mr. Whalen with Pine Tree Drive. Now, in that case, I... If the residence down there on that short road is a different scenario, because the town owns that property. So, irrelevant to that, Kevin, for a minute. If those folks down there, like on Pine Tree Drive, were to get together and put a proper turnaround on that road, and have the highway superintendent approve it, it's, that would have to be done properly. Could we then consider helping these people out? Helping the people on Woodland Hills drive out? I mean, it's all over town. There are certain roads that have no turnaround.
Alright, we get the point, but what I'm gonna say is...
With ARPA, now's the time to mention it, though.
It's not.
Why not?
Because ARPA is not part of this budget. We're trying to get through the budget.
Okay.
It's not part of what we're doing here. I'm not saying that it's not something that you couldn't put under ARPA, alright? Because it very well may be able to be put under ARPA. But I would strongly suggest that we look at what it's going to cost to do each one of those.
Yeah.
And then what it's gonna cost in the future to do it for somebody else. Because I would be totally against doing it for whomever now, and not in the future. And we're gonna, first of all, gonna have to change a resolution that says that they need to bring it up. So that's something that we would have to discuss. Even with the ARPA money, you can't go against your own resolutions by spending that money, I wouldn't think.
Okay.
And how many roads out there are there now, what somebody was saying the other day about...
You mentioned five right off the bat. I bet you you're talking 1.3 million to 2 million dollars just to start. Mike can tell you what he just spent
Sure.
for the road he did the other day. So, yeah. But the big thing is that, without throwing him under the bus, this board would have to make a decision to go against, I think it was a 1998 resolution?
Well, it's not really a resolution, it's part of the, um, zoning and planning.
I mean, it's like a... No, but they did pass a resolution to go within to, um, utilize certain specs that were actually, I think, that we took from the Town of Plasford. And then Mike would have a big say whether he wanted to take the road over anyways, or whether he thought it was conducive.
Okay.
That's another big conversation.
Thank you.
Alright. So is there anything else on this budget that we need to discuss? Did everybody have a chance to look through on the corrections? If you didn't, why don't you take about five, 10 minutes and check your little paperwork? I went through it today. I know Mary went through it, and Donna. I didn't find anything that they hadn't already found. And I apologize, Burns, because you don't have our...
Sure.
...马克up. You do have a copy of the most current, right?
Of the which one?
Of the most current, after the changes. You get a copy of it?
Yeah.
Nobody has it.
No.
But we don't do that.
We don't, we don't. Right now, we're just, right now, we're just doing the changes that you guys have gone over. But the preliminary does not come out until the board...
I understand that, but do they have the round two markups?
No, because that's the first, that's gonna be the preliminary. So I made all the changes that you guys have asked for so far. I haven't made any changes that you've been talking about that you haven't.
Okay, I didn't realize that they hadn't seen that yet. Okay. So basically, the changes on these are what we've discussed.
Yes, I've changed all the changes that you guys went over in the last two meetings, plus ones that you just did tonight on this sheet. For the preliminary.
Mary, when it came to the senior citizen allocation?
Yep, right now, I think the program's re-aging was at 3,500.
35, okay.
35, 28.
Okay, thank you. And the question was, did you pay this year in 22? Was there a 1,700 dollar? There wasn't. Okay. 35, thank you. It's all set.
I mean, if you want, I can give you a copy of my changes that I made on...
Okay.
I'll give you, I'll put copies of this. And then the other thing that you guys changed tonight was taking out the 30,000 to...
No, I just like, didn't have the opportunity to look to see that...
We can't give out the preliminary, because that would be quite a...
Right. Somebody didn't mess something on their office favor. Just so they have something to come there by, if you know what I'm saying. Always, it's all right there. If you got any questions, you can look them. Mine's gonna change again to take that 30,000 out. Why are you going to go over that account? What are you working on? Are you gonna spend that money?
If I don't, if I don't write this down, I'll never remember. Look in the camera and say that. If I don't write this down, I'll never remember. I should've been on the other side, though, this is the better side.
And then the other thing that's not on there is the 30,000 that you got, I missed.
Got one.
Yeah, I guess there are extra ones here.
Just tell me when you think you got enough, or had enough time to check the item, your paperwork.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay?
Yeah.
The only one that I believe that we're still discussing, that's still a discussion tonight, would be... One man's coach, right? So I think Mike said he'd bring back some... I said, I think you said you were gonna bring back some, uh...
Wow.
Money, salaries, whatever you define.
I didn't know, I wasn't gonna bring them back, but I did. I did look at, I guess, some, some in the Beaton Town. It was 22,000. Prue was higher.
Howard, you got it up there for me?
Yeah, Prue was a full-time, he's at 52, and he has a secretary that's part-time, 29 hours, 17. Thomas Serenac is unspecific on the time that they are in, and that is at 10, 887. Sable is 28, 610. Beaton Town is 22, 033, and Shazie is 21, 390, all part-time. Is that Prue, right? Is that Prue?
What was Beaton Town, huh?
22. Beaton Town was 22, 033.
You said you had much Shazie?
Down to Shazie. And they are contracted through Town of Champlain, and they're 21, 390. Shared services.
What was the 28, 610? Not Sable, thank you.
And, Howard, I picked one up on Open Book New York. I don't know if you've ever been on that site. Town of Dannemora, and this was for the year 21. So it could be... on that site, but Town of Danmore, and this was for the year '21, so it could be higher. They were coming in at 10-5.
For Danmore?
For the Town of Danmore, yeah. Though that town is about the same size as ours, I believe, in terms of population and area.
What was Serenac?
Serenac was... 10-887?
10-887.
Yeah, that's right. Nobody knows where these guys are in their careers. Because we're looking at a code enforcement officer that's been here 18 years. We've seen quite a few 2% increases over the year.
Well, we were trying to save money, we're doing this, and this jumps out as a large sum in comparison to other departments. We have it higher than yourself, obviously. So we came about checking other towns that came up with numbers that we do feel that would be similar and feel that we, for some of this feeling, that we are looking at making a cut at $36,000 per hour. We can make a change, though. Why not? So, sort of, well, that's the end of discussion, and let's just go home.
I...
They're wrong.
Well, if you read this document...
They're wrong because they're not taking Clint County Civil Service into account.
Yeah, they're two different entities.
Like I told you last week.
That's why I said to get civil service involved.
Yep. This is direct, I'll give you a direct quote from Clint County. "I spoke with the director and deputy director about reduction in pay for your current code enforcement officer. We would advise you to check with the town attorney, but it appears that reducing William's salary would fall under Section 75 in U.S. state civil law and would constitute disciplinary actions. William does have Section 75 rights because his start date with the town was 1/13/2004. Once the position is vacated, it is possible that the salary could be changed for the new employee as long as the town doesn't have a union contract that dictates salary ranges for that position."
That's what I said, not me.
Yeah. Well, we certainly can't check with the town attorney because obviously there's a clear conflict.
You're right, but Clint County Civil Service ain't going to lie to us.
I didn't say that.
No, I'm just saying. I mean, if they tell us that's what it is, it's what it is.
And if you want to take it one step farther under Section 75 for removal or other disciplinary action, person described in paragraph, well, he's actually paragraph C, and I'll read that in a second. "This subdivision shall not be removed or otherwise subjected to any disciplinary penalty provided in this section except for incompetency or misconduct shown after a hearing upon stated charges pursuant to this section." In the section C, we aren't bringing charges, we're just looking at...
As you are.
Once you, once you do a change like that, it's considered a... I'm getting the right word here. Well, it doesn't matter, if we can't do it, we can't do it. It's just one action. "And he is considered a Class C, an employee holding a position in the non-competitive or labor class other than his position designated by the rules of state or Minnesota Civil Service Commission as confidential or requiring the performance of functions influencing policy. Who since his or her last entry into the service has completed at least five years of continuous service in the non-competitive or labor class in a position, a position not so designated in the rules as confidential or requiring the performance of functions influencing policy." You see that? We're just kidding, I'm not going to read it. So, check that. Yep.
Further?
"And if we're looking to put somebody in as a trainer, if we want to put them in as a temporary code enforcement, it could be up to three months, and that way the new employee could train with William before he retires, but it can only be a three-month period."
Three months prior to the vacancy opening of that job, correct?
Or just three months.
Or just three months, whenever? Okay. I didn't, that's what I want to know, is if it had to be like three months before it was vacant, or you can just do it three months, whenever.
No. Question. His term ends last day of this year.
No, it doesn't. Civil Service says that he is through to next year.
It follows whoever appoints him. Then I got a two-year term.
At our organizational meeting, we appointed him for a one-year term.
Every year. And if you remember what Mr. McCormick said last year when we talked about this, every year, we, because we did it for 100 years here.
Yeah.
Okay? Go through each and every job, and reappoint them for that year. But in general law, whoever the appointees are, unless you have just cause to do something, follow the term of whoever appointed. So if Donna appoints Deputy Town Clerk, and she's a four-year term, it's four years. We do, informally, we do it formally because we do it on the record, but, you know, it has been a practice that we, again, put each one down each year just so there's no question of who's going to work out. In any case, it doesn't change what he just brought up on the civil service law, whether or not he's in the middle of a term or not. Other than the fact that, that's why I said what I did at the last meeting, I'd be very wary of taking money away from somebody that is a sitting position. It's different when you have a vacant position. If there's a vacancy, that person has no standing because they don't have five years, and they're accepting the job at whatever rate you tell them it is.
To my understanding.
Am I done? I've got to bust a reel, I don't want to sit here all night.
No, I hear you.
It's all right. It's fine. It's what it is.
All right, so I'm making your agreements, I'm only making the changes that you saw in my paper plus the 30,000 from there. Did you give him the touch, did you give him the touch, Rick?
I can? All right. Last year's... Oh, yeah. I believe it was the 30 cents, right?
Yes.
0082, and went to 34.
34.
Without any changes to what was just there. It's a 4 cent increase for the general. The highway was at $2.81, you might as well say, and it's going to $2.91, so that is a 9 cents.
$2.91, because it's...
Much is it, 9 cents increase? Now, just for curiosity, what is a 4 cents a thousand? What percentage is that of the total tax rate going up? Well, that's, that's where the public gets confused.
Yeah.
We go up 4 cents a thousand. But they're going to see the budget, that we just increased $570,000, or $540,000.
Right, so...
Higher budget, but that's not a tax rate increase.
Okay, so my number's going to have to change a little bit because we took the 30,000 out for the general.
Right.
Okay, but, but roughly, the general was $1,355,761, okay? The last estimated, no, not the estimated revenue, sorry. It's 215. So, would have been less than 675, 675,000, but now it's going to be 645,000, right, if we take the 30 out?
If you look at the last column, Kevin.
Yeah. That'll show the increase, but I think what he's trying to say is that the current tax rate is not going to reflect what the change of the current year is because we're taking... So the general, as it stands right now, and this is going to be, I could say a hair off by that 30,000, it was going to be a 14, you might say a 15% increase, okay, to the budget. If you're looking at, if you're looking at fractions like you like to do, you know, what is the increase?
Sure, sure.
It's 14.98%, almost 15% increase to the general. And then the highway ended up at 3.41% higher. But what you have to do is, you have to take, where we're taking out less, where it says less, the funner here, where it used, on yours, it's going to say 210,000 that we're offsetting the budget by, we're going to offset the general, what did it say, 30, so 876 would be 5, 550,000?
550, yes.
So we're going to take 550,000 out of the bank and put it in this budget, okay, on the general. And then 200,000 for the highway, and that is coming out of the bank and put into the highway. So that's why you're not seeing the big... We're underneath the tax cap, other than doing, adding up 570,000, and that's our money.
What was last year's?
Our money, the town's money, everybody's, all of the constituents. And that's not saying that we're going to spend all that. It just allows us to start utilizing some of that on our own kid reserve. Does that make sense to everyone? So that's why, like I say, if you, if you took that out, you would not have gone over the 2% tax gap. Our, our neighbor there, Town of Plasberg, was that 74 or somewhere around that?
City. City's over 11, right?
They're over, I think. I shouldn't say that without checking. I know the Town of Plasberg even, 74, ours was 78, I think theirs was 74. They, they still made it under the tax cap, even with a 7%, 7.44% increase. They still made it under the tax cap. There's no way we could make it into the tax cap and take that money out of the bank and start using it. And that's what the whole, that's what I wanted everybody that showed up that night to realize. The rates show from the increase, even though it looks like it's 15% over last year's budget. It's not, because that money has to go in there so that we can do a lot of it. Did that confuse anybody? All right. For good, I think that's it. All right. Sorry, I know what that's like.
See what I said?
All right, my friend.